So this is our first joint meeting of the Sustainability Committee and Clean Energy Task Force. And I think because we're meeting on the day that the task force is normally scheduled, this is officially or formally a meeting of the, a special meeting of the Clean Energy Task Force with the Sustainability Committee invited to join us as guests. I don't think it changes anything in the way we handle things, but officially that's the format. A special meeting just because we changed the time. So special, I think, means we can still conduct business. I think it really only means we can't venture from the agreed upon agenda. So let's, what, did we have somebody join us? Let me just take this, it's Amy, maybe she's trying to get in. Hey, Amy. Okay, I will forward it to you right now, yeah? All right, take care, bye. I'm gonna send this to Amy McLean. All right, so back to the agenda.
We're short on people from Sustainability to approve the minutes, are we?
I think so, right? So if we get Joe, then we've got one, two, three, four. So then we, then we can. So maybe we hold on.
Hey, Mark, it's Bob.
Oh, hey, Bob.
It's Bob Crowther, I had to dial in, yeah.
All right.
Having problems with my internet, so I had to dial in.
Okay, welcome, Bob, good to hear you. So we do have a quorum already, and if we get Joe, that's icing on the cake. So, and if we get Amy, same thing for Clean Energy. So hopefully she can join us. So we'll see how this goes. It's our first joint meeting. We're gonna find it is a, it's a broader remit, right? There was, I think, for both of these groups before, there was, there were full agendas. But I think for lots of reasons, it makes sense to combine them. And I think we'll probably benefit from, from the larger group going at, going at things. So we'll start with public audience. And let me, let me stop sharing and go back to our full screen. And why don't we start in our public audience? Because we are, this first joint meeting, and we have a guest, let's start with introductions. So why don't we, there's Tim. Let's just go through and make sure everybody knows who everybody is. So my name is Mark Scully. I am, I'm not officially Chair of the Clean Energy Task Force, I don't think, but I am Chair now of the Sustainability Committee. And I'm a Simsbury resident and retired and very active in this clean energy stuff. So, hey, Amy, welcome. We're just getting started, just doing introductions. So let's go along with the Sustainability Team to, Tim.
Tim Walzak, teaching town, been a part of the Clean Energy Task Force for the last few years, last couple of years with the Sustainability, working on the building the watershed for the 3.0 Sustainability for 2022.
Great. And also on Sustainability, we have Bob, want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Bob Crowther, I'm the liaison to the Sustainability Commission from the Economic Development Commission.
And Rich?
Rich Cortez, I'm the liaison from the Planning Commission to the Sustainability Committee.
Great. So moving on to the Clean Energy Task Force, we have Tim Walzak. We won't make you introduce yourself again, or me. We have Phil.
Hey, I'm Secretary for the Clean Energy Task Force.
And graciously agreed to serve this double capacity for the Sustainability Committee as well. So thank you, that's huge. And Amy?
Hey, guys, I'm Amy McLean, I'm new to the Clean Energy Task Force, not new to town, and not, not new to energy. So I'm really glad to be here and looking forward to being a part of a vibrant Simsbury.
Great, great, great. So we're waiting on Joe Daley, who we expect, he said he's stuck in traffic. But let's move on to our guests. Leah, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, my name's Leah Mueller, I go to Simsbury High School, and I'm a senior, and I'm also a senior Girl Scout.
Excellent, well, welcome. Tim shared your presentation with us before, so we're thrilled to have you with us. And Susan?
So I'm, I'm a Simsbury resident who's interested in issues around energy. And I work, I volunteer with clean energy with Citizens Climate Lobby.
Great, Susan, great to have you, yeah. Susan's been very helpful, instrumental, I would say, in getting us, moving us along in our climate emergency resolution. So let me pull the agenda back up again. We have sort of two opportunities for members of the public to speak. If we're gonna follow the, you know, the formal rules, then there's the public audience, and then there's the open forum at the end. I'm not sure when's the best time for Leah, for us to hear from, from you. I'm, I'm thinking, why don't you let us go through some of our stuff, and you'll kind of have a feel for what we're doing? And then, and then I think you'll have more of a context for what you're gonna do. So if that makes sense. Ray, do you know, I'm correct, right? We can have people from the public speak in the open forum, right? Or am I mistaken?
As far as I know, as long as you're not adding any items to the agenda, that's really the only stipulation.
Okay, let's do that. Let's, let's move on with some of our stuff, Leah, so you just kind of know what we're up to.
Mark, before we begin, if I could just ask Leah a quick question. I'll record in the minutes, our, our guests from the meetings, just wanted to make sure that you're comfortable having your name recorded in the meeting minutes. If you'd like to do just first name with a last initial or your full name, just wanted to ask you.
My full name's fine.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, by the way, I just ran into Tom Roy at the Burgers on the Bridge, and I passed that by him, and, you know, he pointed out that if this were a meeting in town, and, you know, and Leah or others were speaking in public audience, they would get up and state their name, and probably their address too. So as long as you're comfortable with that, then that's certainly good. So thanks for checking on that, Phil. Good, so let me share the agenda again. So we kind of know, I think, I think the first thing is minutes. And I think both of them went out. We have, again, let me look at the agenda just so I get the dates right. We had Sustainability from June 16th, and Clean Energy Task Force from July 14th. I think everybody has had those. So I would dispense with sort of reading them, or even putting them up on the screen. And I think to be, to be official, I think we'll have members of the Sustainability Committee vote on the Sustainability Minutes, and then the Clean Energy Task Force vote on the Clean Energy Task Force meeting, minutes. We will at some point, I think, actually officially merge these two groups, so then it'll be simpler. But does anybody need to see, from the Sustainability Committee, need to see the minutes? Or are we good to move ahead? Great, is there a motion to approve the Sustainability Committee minutes of June 16th?
So moved.
Yeah, so moved.
Second. Good with motions, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Great, so similarly, we have the Clean Energy Task Force minutes of July 14th. Does anybody need to see those? Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion.
Second. I'll second it.
Sorry, I have to, I have to abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay. That's right, you came, so that was, you came to August or something, right? No, no, we didn't have an August, right? I think, weren't you there?
No, I had had a, yeah, I wasn't there, sorry.
All right, all right, so we'll let you go on this one. So I seconded, and any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, and one abstention from Amy? Okay, good. So the next item on our agenda, we'll, we'll go through sort of the Clean Energy Task Force, and then the Sustainability Tasks. So the Clean Energy Task Force has really two big things going on. And they are the Climate Emergency Resolution and an Energy Plan. And we had talked at our last meeting, it's just kind of coincidental that they're both sort of ready for primetime. We talked about whether we should present these to the Board of Selectment and Board of Education individually, or in sort of together. And after a lot of discussion, I think the sense of the group, at least I remember Bob recommending this, was that we do them together. Tom Roy agreed. So I think what we're, what we'd like to do is reach out to, individually, to the Board of Selectment and to the Board of Ed to try to get on, get on the agenda for one of their meetings, and present both of these, of these issues. I've got a presentation, a draft presentation that I've, that I've got going. I can quickly show you tonight, but it's still kind of in draft form. I will send that around to folks before we give it. But the idea is we would go before each of these two boards and say, first of all, we drafted this Climate Emergency Resolution. And, and, and I think the good thing is, and we have a plan, right? So here's our, here's our energy plan. So I think it does make sense to do them together. So for the task force, what I would like to do, we sent this thing around, let me pull it up. And I'd like to vote on a revised, revised resolution. Let me see, do I have this up? I was loaded, yeah, here we go. So let me share this. It's kind of funny that because it's taken us so long, so we approved this thing in January. We actually started talking about this with the, under the guidance of Citizens Climate Lobby and Susan and her colleagues. Back in September, I think, was the first official meeting where we actually started talking about this. And just as background for some of the Sustainability folks, I think a lot of us have been over, in the past, over the years, somewhat reluctant to do something like this, to propose a bold resolution, declaring an emergency, or set a global target, because we have often felt like those are easy to do. What we really want to do is just kind of get stuff done, right? Promote more solar, promote more efficiency. But I think a couple of things have changed, or have changed our mind. One is just that this climate emergency is increasingly evident, it's unavoidable. We see it everywhere, so it's really, it's hard not to, not to, to recognize the climate emergency. And I think, secondly, our hope is that by doing something like this, it'll actually help us in town to, to have the type of conversations we need, to have the kind of common language that we want, and to spur some action. I mean, nothing else, having those conversations. You know, some of, some of the measures that we're gonna want to take will be controversial, and will, you know, will take time, but let's start to have those conversations. So interestingly, since we came out, which, since the Clean Energy Task Force approved our draft in January, the IPCC has a new report, so the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. Let's see if we can get this done before the seventh report comes out. But the, the revision that I would like the Clean Energy Task Force to review, you can see the only changes are in this whereas, I updated the language regarding the IPC report, where it used to say, the fifth report, oh, 2014 is the wrong year, it's 2021.
Yeah, that was confusing me.
All right. It is 2021, sixth assess, so, which just came out a few weeks ago. And I took out the old quote from the fifth report, which said, you can see it's crossed out there, continued emissions of greenhouse gases will cause blah, blah, blah. And I found a quote from the sixth report that says, "It is unequivocal that human influence has warmed the atmosphere, ocean, and land. Global warming of 1.5 degrees Celsius and 2 degrees Celsius will be exceeded during the 21st century unless deep reductions in carbon dioxide and other greenhouse gas emissions occur in the coming decades." There were lots of, sort of, obviously, lots of quotes to choose from, but that seemed to me to kind of capsulize the, that report. I think other than that, I did not change anything material. I don't think, Amy, you might, you, you, you might take a look at this. I don't think there's anything material at the state level that's happened.
Oh, yes, there is.
Okay, what did I forget?
So, the 2018 GHD inventory came out yesterday.
Oh, okay, that one, yeah.
And it is damning, to say the least. I think we want to reference it because by their own assessment, we will not meet our goals that we have set in the trajectory that we are going right now. So it's probably something that you want to reference. I don't think you have to deep dive into it, because they have a really good summary. Sorry about the traffic. They have a really good summary in the beginning of it, and I will email you, unless you have it. I'll email that to you, and you can get it out to others. Pretty easy read, I actually did a press release on it today, I can send you that. That gives you a quick, and, and quick and dirty. But it's, it's, it's definitely something you want to reference because it validates statewide what we have to do, both in local communities and statewide and legislative.
Let's see if we can draft something on the fly.
Well, that would mean I need to find it, so I can, let me go get my press release, I'll be right back.
All right, okay, if, maybe, the other thing we could do is, we could approve this with the statement that, that maybe that you and I draft a short statement summarizing.
Let's do that, let's do that.
We could do that, because we're gonna want to include a link in there, and...
Yep, 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 and I don't want to keep everybody, and the fact is that we've got a lot of work to do, so we'll just put that together.
Yep, so yeah, that, you're right, that, that came out, that was, that was a headline in today's paper, right? So, so that's, yeah, that's very timely. Then, and the basic idea is that we are not meeting our goals for reducing our emissions, so. All right, that's, that's great, thank you, Amy. And then the only other thing, I changed some dates, I think, at the end. So we'll see when we actually issue this, but at least now we're, I have today's date on it, so. Just quick review, we've got all these wherethes with the background, and then basically we're saying that the town, we are saying that the town should declare a climate and ecological emergency. The Board of Selectment and the Board of Ed should direct the town manager and superintendent schools to establish an emergency mobilization effort that with appropriate assistance will, will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 80%. And then this is the sort of the meat and potatoes. The Board of Selectment and the Board of Ed will direct the town manager and superintendent schools to instruct all town and school department heads, committees, and commissions to establish plans to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So that's the real ask here, is every department, every committee and commission needs to now put together a plan. How is this, you know, what, what's our part in meeting these goals? And then there's outreach to the, to the community, engaging the community. There's the issue of environmental justice, so making this transition an equitable one, and building it into our plan, our, our, our planning documents, advocating at the state level, the federal level as appropriate, and engaging our youth is the last, the last point here. So that's really what we're asking here. And I think, I don't know about everybody else, I still feel good about this. I know one of our reluctance, one part of our reluctance early on was, you can declare a climate emergency, but then what does it mean? What are we asking people to do? So I think this is, this has real, real teeth. I think it, it, you know, it will be, it will generate a lot of discussion, it will probably be somewhat controversial. It will mean that a lot of people are gonna have to do a lot of work. So I think it, it means something, but it's also high level enough that, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not sort of micromanaging. So I would ask that with the suggestion that Amy made, that we add, add a whereas, a provision regarding the recent report on Connecticut's progress on greenhouse gas emissions, with that condition that we approve these, this revised Climate Emergency Resolution.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that all that does is give you backup. I mean, it just sort of says, yeah, it's not, you know, we're not saying something crazy here. The state itself just issued this. And I think it's a good sort of backstop for us.
Yep, that's great. So is there, is there, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Mark.
All right. Any other discussion? Great, and all those in favor?
Yeah, I do, Mark, I do have one question, I apologize, I couldn't find my button. We're, we're asking the Board of, Board of Selectment and the Board of Education to, to, to take action. And as I read through this, I, what was, I thought, missing was, what is our role? Do, do we want to put something there about, you know, assisting them and helping to develop the plans? I mean, we're the, we're the, we have the expertise, we have the knowledge, we, I mean, you have, you've created a very detailed plan itself. And so how do we start incorporating some of that thinking into their, into their planning? And do, and do we want to take a more proactive role with the Board of Education and the town management, and actually put it in writing? Or are we just expected to be on the sidelines, providing guidance along the way?
Yeah, that's a really good question. The, the first, or the first draft of this had a much bigger role for the Clean Energy Task Force. And if he goes, I could pull it up, but we were actually gonna write these, these plans. And then we kind of looked at it and said, we don't have the, we don't have the wherewithal to do that. It's just, it's just, you know, too much. So we really, and, and we need the ownership of each of these departments and boards. So we kind of rewrote the thing. We do have a small role here, number point eight. We will create a benchmarking calendar for deadlines and accomplishments. And I think the fact that we're following with our energy plan, we will certainly, you know, you know, offer to work with, you know, you know, all of the departments, all the boards, but I, I, I think, I think we were happier not, not defining a particularly onerous role for, for ourselves in this document. Just because we're not, you know, we don't have, we're not, even, even the town put off approving this because they said, we need, we, we're really gonna need to hire an energy manager to, to pull this thing off, so.
Okay.
I mean, unless you sort of would like to see some, some sort of hybrid wording in there, you know, we, we were happier leaving our role as, as sort of, as it is now, advisory. All right, any other questions or suggestions? Then, then let's have the task force, the Clean Energy Task Force vote on this. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Great. So this will be, let me save that, close that. So the other big thing that the Clean Energy Task Force has is this energy plan. And we do not have any, any, any changes to that. What I might do really briefly is just sort of flash it on the screen, so the, particularly for the folks from the Sustainability Committee, know what it is. You know, we did one of these two, two years ago, 2019. We went before the Board of Selectment with it, and we, and what we did was, we said, we, we're not asking you now to approve every single provision in it and all the details, but we have this draft plan, we'd like your blessing for us to now go and talk, talk with the community, talk with some, some departments, some different, different groups. So we've, we've done some of that over the last two years. We actually got credit for our plan with Sustainable Connecticut, for both the municipal and residential. And so now we have a revised plan. And our, our idea is now to take this before the, the Board of, really both, the Board of Selectment and the Board of Ed, and ask for their, for their blessing on this. So everybody's seen the wonderful solar array at the, at the Simsbury Farms Skating Center. Tom Roy loves the slogan, "Making ice with the sun," is that it? And I don't think they could have fit one more panel on that roof, I think it's just amazing. So anyway, our goal is for the entire community to use 50% clean energy by 2030 and 100% by 2040. We've got sort of a high level introduction, very similar to what we had two years ago. We go, we have a bit of perspective, we, we lifted some of this from the West Hartford Plan, because they, because the context in which we're releasing this is a very, it's a heightened one with both COVID and with the sort of environmental justice, and just justice issues and Black Lives Matter being at the fore, so good to kind of put that in context. We have a couple pages of our energy usage, our solar production, just some stuff that comes out of this analysis that we do of our town, overall town energy usage. We have sort of a high level approach to the plan. And then we have this page, this, if you look at this structure of the page, you'll see this now for the next five pages. So you've got a topic, in this case, energy efficiency in buildings. We talk about what we've done, progress to date, we talk about what the benefits are. There's some kind of a graphic that's showing some information. We've got potential actions we could take, and some goals that we've set for ourselves. So using that structure, we have now energy efficiency in buildings. We have some information on Simsbury's participation in the utility plans. So really briefly, this graph in the upper left, we have now 11 years of data. The bars show the number of households that took part in utility programs. So the big blue one is the Home Energy Solutions, HES. The orange is HES IE, or HES Income Eligible. And then the RNC is Residential New Construction. Add those all up, and the yellow line shows what percentage of the town has taken part. So by, oops, I just changed, okay. By 2020, about 27%, I think, 28% of Simsbury residents have taken part in these utility, you know, energized CT residential efficiency programs versus something like 22, 23% for the state. So we're, we have generally been taking advantage of these programs that everybody pays for in their, in their electricity bill. So the upper right shows then who went and actually got rebates and used incentives for things like, actually, that's the lower left here, sorry, lower left is who then got insulation rebates and appliance rebates and HVAC. Upper right is, is municipal and business. Amy, you're, you're very familiar with these, these programs and these charts, I know.
Yeah, and, and, you know, during COVID, they actually relaxed the rebates to the degree to which you didn't have to pay if you were oil, or you were an oil customer, you would get, you didn't have to copay, and you'd get the HES, the Home Energy Assessment done for free. And then I got literally $11,000 worth of insulation for free. That was last year. And so these programs are worth it. I, you know, it's funny, it's good to see that you've compared it to the state, because I was thinking to myself, geez, only 27%, you know, Simsbury folks have taken advantage of these programs? That's too bad. And then you said, oh, there's the state level, and I said, yeah, it's even worse. So, you know, people are paying into this, and they just don't know it. They don't realize it.
And we've got this spreadsheet that, that does this for, for any, for every town. And Simsbury hasn't done an efficiency campaign, really. But you see some towns where all of a sudden, these bars just absolutely spike. And it's because we did something, we did a mailing, we went, you know, we went, we went to the Simsbury, it's like the September Fest and all kinds of things to, you know, promote. Because as Amy said, this is the best deal in town. This is like incredibly low hanging fruit, you pay for it already in your electricity bill, and it's, and it's a great, great investment there. So anyway, we'll keep moving. I mentioned that we have this same page, we had efficiency, now we have heating and cooling, which is essentially heat pumps. We have that same overall plan, structure for renewable energy, transportation... We have that same overall plan, structure for renewable energy, transportation and microgrids. So and then what we have is kind of the the plan itself. What do we aim to do over the next two years? And what do we aim to do by 2030? So you can see here what we and the Clean Energy Task Force are kind of aiming to accomplish over the over the next couple of years. So this is our real, this is our real ambition. So this is kind of the agenda of Clean Energy Task Force meetings for the next two years, right? Getting these things done. So we can spend some more time on that, but I wanted everybody to see that. And that's pretty much it for our energy plan. So and the the one of the interesting connections there is we will be submitting that, this plan again for credit for points for sustainable CT. So I think there's 20 points potentially, 10 for residential and 10 for municipal slash business. So I think that is, that's it on the the climate emergency resolution and the energy plan, both of which we will, I'm not going to bother flashing this presentation. What I have is a PowerPoint deck that kind of goes through the highlights of both of those, the climate emergency resolution and the energy plan, a short version, obviously, to go before the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen. So before that goes out, I will send that around so everybody can see it. But our plan now is to take both of these, both these documents and ask for the for the support of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Ed. What will be interesting is the Board of Selectmen has seen us a lot of times, right? We've gone before the Board of Selectmen reporting on streetlights and other good things that are going. We really have not gone before the Board of Ed, so this will be a new, a new step. But actually, that's the next item on our on our agenda. And just because it has been, so the the next topic on the agenda for the Clean Energy Task Force is the 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 Board of Ed. And just a couple of things going on. I think we have not, as I said, not had as much contact with the Board of Ed over the years. But in recent months, we have, we have had a better sort of response and more of a collaboration. So you may know that the Board of Ed is looking at solar on the on the high school. You may have seen the roof going, the roof that went on over the summer. I don't know if it's done or not, but it was, they were piled up in the parking lot and the aim was to get it done before school started. So probably next summer, they'll be putting solar on that roof. And so we were able to help them actually look at the different bids that they got. The next thing we'll really want to help the Board of Ed with is the renovation of Latimer Lane. Right? You may have heard there's a major renovation, what was the number, 36 million or something? For Latimer Lane. So our aim is for that to be done on a really energy efficient, high performance building envelope, maybe even net zero basis, right? So we've had conversations, we had emails going back and forth. To put it sort of bluntly, I've been really trying to get us involved in that process as early as possible, possible. If we come in too late and the architect is picked and the plans are set, it's very hard to make changes at that point. So the last I heard, the architect was being selected for the work at Latimer Lane. I was able to give some input into things that we want to look for. I reached out to our energy network, Amy, and sort of, you know, what who's who's done high performance schools? What are the types of questions we need to ask? So we need to make sure the architect has done high performance buildings. We need to make sure that they're working with a contractor, a builder that has done this. And we need to give them the sort of the the marching orders right at the outset. This is what we want. You know, they'll do it if we say this is what we want. If we don't, then it won't happen. So.
Mark?
Yeah.
So I'm on public building. The the architect is selected.
Okay.
You should talk to Jeff Shea about all of that so that he puts you in contact with them.
Great. So you're on the Build the Public Building Committee?
Yeah.
All right. I just saw Jeff at Burgers on the Bridge. I should have talked to him about it. Where all all good business happens, right?
There you go.
Excellent. That, oh, that's good to know. Thank you, Rich. All right. That's it on the board. So that's it for Clean Energy Task Force. We're joined, okay, we have Joe, Joe Deli, welcome. Good to see you. And we have Baird. Before we move on from, actually officially, since Baird's not a member, we'll have we'll have Baird report later in open forum about the EV show. So don't let me forget about that, coming up at September Feast. So what I'd like to do really briefly, and this is anything else from Clean Energy Task Force. That's all I've got. So for Sustainable CT, really what I thought we could do really briefly is kind of look at our action list and do a little bit of high level. Let me pull this thing up and share my screen. We have, so our our plan, just so everybody is on the same page, our plan, we were certified in spring of 2019. And your certification is good for three years. So we will, if we want to retain, and we were silver, as folks may know. If we want to retain our certification, then we need to do that by spring of 2022, so next spring. And so there's, what was it now, 13 categories of, yeah, 13 categories of of actions. There's some interesting overlap between sustainable, between the Sustainability Committee and clean clean energy. So what this is, there's, there's a really detailed action list. I'll show you what it looks like that the Sustainable CT folks have put out. And it gives you all kinds of really detailed information, like, you know, if you want to do action 2.1.1, you need to create a municipal, regional brownfield inventory, blah, blah, blah. Here's what you need to submit. Here's your time train for credit, like when you did it, do you still get credit for it? What type of an action, how many points? So there's a detailed version here, which is really helpful if you really want to actually be planning one of these actions. But if we want to kind of do some high level planning, we have this sort of more high level thing here. So we are going to have, we're going to have a lot of work before us to get this done by by next spring. The good news is there's a lot of things already underway. And I think there's also a lot of organizations doing interesting stuff. A good example is, you may, you may have heard of a Pollinator Pathway Group in town. They've essentially already done or are planning several of these activities. And I think I think they're going to get us 40 Sustainable CT points. The town, you may have heard, the Board of Ed just passed a resolution on on pollinator pathways. And that is, what number was that? 4, 3.12, 312. So just to take an example here, Pollinator Pathway, pass a pollinator friendly, so 3.12.3. This is a little small print. Let me go a little closer here. Says, pass a pollinator friendly community resolution. That's 20 points. And that just happened. So we just need to make sure that we have all of the documentation lined up. So that's a great example of our work has pretty much been done for us. So I think part of what we really want to do, particularly because it's not our first time through. I think the first time through, our our sense was most of what we're getting points for is stuff we've already done. We just need to kind of document it. So I think now, you know, what would be great is to actually be doing some new stuff and working with groups that we hadn't worked with before. So that one's a great example. So there are 13 categories. We need points in each. And let's just go through high level, what we've done here, this is somewhat approximate. But column A is a really high level description of the action. Column B here shows what we got in points for 2019. It is approximate because some of the actions have changed and it's not quite apples to apple. Column C is what we are planning, hoping for credit in 2022. Whether it's new or rolling credit, if it's something that we did and is still being practiced and used, we might be able to get rolling credit if we can demonstrate that it is quote unquote current and relevant. And we penciled in names here. If we could pencil in a spreadsheet, these would be penciled of who is sort of taking the lead and then who we want to consult. So the first, the first category is equity. And there's a bunch of things we can do there. One of the things we were kind of hoping for is get the get enough, get some town staff and volunteers to participate in equity training. It looks like that's not going to be feasible. The the training is 12 hours. And you need not just like any town staffers, but you need a department head. It would need to be like a Mike Deliden or a Tom Roy. And it's just probably not going to be realistic to get any of those folks to do 12 hours of training. But the thing we have to do, in addition to getting the points, is you need you need equity projects. And so we'll have our, we'll have an equity fellow come, actually join us from Sustainable CT and give us a little more of a training there. But basically, it means when we're doing one of these projects, we do it with equity in mind. And they have this equity toolkit and this equity lens. So that I, to be honest with you, I think that's going to be our biggest challenge to get silver is we need to do three projects through with the equity toolkit. So we will come back to that. So we know, so everybody sort of knows what what it means. So here, one was equity, two was thriving local economies. I think Bob is kind of taking the lead on some of these.
Hey, Mark.
Yeah.
If you can go back to the equity, I'm not looking too closely at the spreadsheet. But we did just hire an equity and diversity person for central office. I don't know if that's someone we can tap into, like one of the items on the far right for the Board of Ed.
So there's somebody, you say central office, that's at the Board of Ed level?
Yeah, it's for the whole school district. It's a new position this year. She's head of Equity and Diversity. I haven't met her yet. She wasn't at our, so I'll look closer at that action.
That's a great suggestion. You know, I think I saw that in the paper, but I didn't make the connection. So thank you. That would be a great person to talk to.
Yeah, I'll send her an email tomorrow.
Great. And I had a conversation with Cheryl Cook and Nicole, what's the surname, from the Spirit Council?
Yeah. That's a great group, too.
Yeah. And I think they've like this this developed and adopt a statement on equity. They may have done that already, or we may, they may be able to work together on that. So I think some of these action points here for equity, we will be able to get. I think the hard part is going to be these separate equity projects. We did three, two years ago. One of them was the Martin Luther King Memorial, one was the Rainbow, the Rainbow Sidewalk or Crosswalk. I think some of the stuff in the schools that they had done on equity and sort of in response to that Blackface incident, I think, if I'm not mistaken. So I think there's things we can do. So two is thriving local economies. Sorry, was there another question or comment?
No, no, I was saying I'll reach out to the Equity and Diversity person at Central Office.
Great. Yeah, that's that's a great suggestion. So these action items on thriving local economies, we technically do not have any brownfield sites, so we can't do that in town. Sustainable purchasing is probably going to be hard. Inventory and promote local retail options. Bob, I know we talked about working with Main Street Simsbury on that. Provide resources and supports to local businesses. Any thoughts on those, Bob?
No, I work with them on a regular basis and I will be able to pull together whatever we need to meet the criteria. They're they're both the Main Street Partnership and the Chamber, extremely active in town. A number of different programs where we locally engage all of our business partners and promoting, you know, business in town. So we should be fine in that space.
Yep, I think so. I think so. Yeah. So if you have any, you know, can correct me here on how many points you think are realistic, let me know. We'll we'll update the spreadsheet.
Hey, Mark.
Okay.
Joe, please.
Mark, what was the, what about that site down by 44 and McDonald's where they put the bank? Wasn't that a brownfield site?
We have.
That corner?
What's the term? We do have sites that, I forget the term, you know, that 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 are degraded and have maybe some hazardous materials. But there is an official list of brownfield sites and we don't have any in town.
Oh, okay.
I guess that's good. It's not good for Sustainable CT. So CPACE, as many of you may know, is Commercial Property Assess Clean Energy. It's a program offered by, I think it's the Green Bank. And it allows particularly businesses, it's commercial businesses, to do energy, clean energy efficiency, energy efficiency or clean energy projects and essentially have them funded right on your tax bill and your property assessment. So it's a program that essentially if we promote it, we can get five points. So I think what what I'm happy to take the lead on is we'll have an event either at the library and or Zoom where we invite, or maybe we go for the Chamber or Rotary and or Rotary, but we'll figure something out. But we'll have an event that promotes CPACE, just so businesses know this is there. And so I think that's an easy five points. Three is well-studied land and natural resources. Tim, do you want to, Amy, I can fill us in as well, but do you want to fill us in in any of these really interesting conversations we've had with Farm River Watershed?
So I'm still trying to work through the sample projects that they were given. It seemed like last time we had talked with them, they had some reservations about just cutting and pasting from that master plan. So I'm trying to work it in. So they have a big packet of information on watershed and they have a good connections with the Farm River Watershed. It's just a matter of mapping it out with the town itself. And then I was curious about like the animal inventory. I think it's like three, four, something like that. But it was, it was a brief meeting. I'm kind of hoping that we can collaborate a little bit more with the following towns. We just had that a very brief hour and a half meeting, which was really just going over that main packet. So I'm hoping that we can team up with Canton or Avon, who was also on the call, and get that going.
Yeah, there was, so the 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 good news is that our, our fellows, you know, we had these young college students over the summer who were helping us. And they they initiated a collaboration with the Farm River Watershed and with several towns. Canton was in, I think there were a couple others, Burlington, if I'm not mistaken, and some others. And because you you think of some of these things, they don't sort of begin and end at the town's borders, right? If you're looking at natural resource and wallet inventory, that's that really makes sense to do on a regional basis. And just, you know, watershed protection, the Promont River Watershed is all over that, some of that stuff. So I guess Tim said, there's there's some details we need to go through. But I think if we can work through all of this, there's a potential to do several of these action items on a, in partnership with other towns. So we're sharing resources. There's some things we're going to have to do on our own just for Simsbury. But we could get some, quite a few points here, I think, on these actions. And in addition, we'll we'll see this down below, you get partnership points if you do something with other communities. So that's a good thing to keep in mind. You get points. And there's a lot of upside on that. So it was really big numbers, like 20, 30, 40 points. So.
On that note, Mark, a question. Do you know of the other towns around us or any towns around us that are also doing Sustainable CT?
You know, we can go to the website and see that.
Right, of course. You're right. But it just occurs to me that if, in fact, we do have that, then we should start with them because they have the same need.
Yeah. And our fellows did a lot of this for us. They they really kind of brought this group together. So if we go in here to, you know, we can see who's in. So this is us, Simsbury. Avon is, I don't know if they're, Avon's not very far along. We can pull out the emails, but our fellows brought together several towns that that were doing this. So I think the good is, is a lot of the legwork's been done, but it is still going to be a fair amount of work. If anybody's interested in any of this, reach out to Tim directly because. a fair amount of work. If anybody's interested in any of this, um, reach out to Tim directly because um, it is a fair amount of work just kind of figuring out. And I think there are, there are some things we're going to have to do specific, specifically in Simsbury. So under this three well-studied natural resources, um, I mentioned pollinator path, uh, pollinator pathways. Um, if anybody's aware of um, you know, any of these actions, whether our groups doing stuff, we should talk to Susan Messino about managed woodlands and urban forests. Um, but if anybody's aware of other groups doing things, let's reach out to them. Um, category four, vibrant and creative cultural ecosystems. Um, including map tourism and cultural assets. Um, we got five points on that before. Um, and I think we can get rolling credit for that if we can demonstrate that what we did before is relevant. So.
Just out of curiosity, I met with Tim Trivinsky over the summer and he was looking into these uh, hiking apps. Would that count in terms of the uh, the mapping of the natural things? If we were to have like the uh, Simsbury Land Trust and open spaces on an app?
Hmm. I don't know where that would go. I don't know if it's under, under well-studied land and natural resources. Uh, that would be a question. Uh, so a hiking app.
Yeah, it's a hiking app for, uh, for, I can't remember the app that he was talking about, but it, it's, it's a popular one. I know my mom has used it in the state of Connecticut.
All right, let me.
And it's just a matter of.
I'll, I'll ask our, unfortunately, our fellows, these two uh, really, really um, crack um, young um, students who are helping us, um, they're back to school now, but um, there are um, still people we can ask at Stanford. So I will ask about that. Hiking.
Hey Mark, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Yeah.
Um, I'm just want to point out that it's six twenty-five and we need to leave room for our guests.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So let's do, let's do sort of a, of a high level. So four, the cultural ecosystems. Five is dynamic resistant planning. And I think, Rich, we talked about some of these.
Yep.
Um, the P O C D permitting processes. Um, so everybody should have access to this spreadsheet. And I think, you know, the, the, you know, the message here is this is going to take a real group effort to get on, to get all these points. So take a look at this. Um, we will continue to go through this at each meeting, but hopefully we can start to really report some progress on, on more of these. Uh, category six is transportation systems. Uh, we've done complete streets. I think we can get rolling credit for some of those. Um, seven is renewable. So this is just sort of all the clean energy stuff. Ray, we're talking about the portfolio manager. We should get points for that. Um, eight is inclusive engagement, communication, education. If we do some kind of a sustainability event, we can get points. Nine, strategic materials management. Joe, I think you're looking at some of those things.
Yo.
So this is kind of where I thought Leah might have a chance, uh, in terms of that education piece. Um, she is working with an advisor to roll it out to uh, members at her high school. I'm sure she'll talk more about it, but I was thinking maybe she could help us along with that education piece.
Sorry, where, where is that? Did I skip over it?
I thought you just said sustainability education at number eight or something like that.
Yep. Excellent.
So I was just thinking, I, I can get going to what Leah is about to be doing and embarking on at the school is something that I thought we could look into as uh, an addition to it.
Great. I think that's, I, you know, we've, we've gone through this, 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 this list before. I would, I, I think if you um, take the agenda file that Phil sent around, there is a link in there to this high level overview. So I would encourage everyone to um, and including folks in Clean Energy Task Force to um, you know, find something that's of interest to you. Find a group that's out there doing something. Um, and in some cases, all we have to do is really work with them and document what they're doing. So um, this is what we'll be doing for the next couple of months to see if we can get, keep our silver, silver certification. So um, all right. Anything else on Sustainable CT? Then uh, we move on to other business. And then open forums. So Leah, now you have a little bit of a, of a understanding of what, what we do, um, what we're up to. So um, as I mentioned, Tim shared your um, presentation with us. Um, but so we'd love to have you, you know, maybe uh, I don't think there's time to go through the whole presentation, but share, share a little bit with us sort of what you're, what you're doing, uh, you know, with your Girl Scout project and, and with who you work with at the high school and sort of what you think we can do together.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for um, having me tonight. I'm really excited about having this connection between the committees and events. I think that'll be really great. So the reasons why I reached out is I wanted to include a slide in my presentation about how kids can get involved in town. So when I saw that we have this Simsbury Sustainability Committee, I thought that that would fit right in. Um, and I also noticed that in some twenty nineteen meeting minutes that I reviewed from the Sustainability Committee, uh, you guys were talking about the Sustainable CT certification and wanting to get youth involved. So that's why I thought that this might be something that you would want access to and might be something that you guys could use. So there are actually three versions of this toolkit. I shared with you the Simsbury High School one. There's also one for Girl Scouts of Connecticut and there's a national version, which I've sent out to people across the country. Um, and so I obviously won't go through the whole toolkit, but um, Mrs. Barker, the AP Environmental Science teacher at the high school, um, she's one of my advisors and I, she's agreed to be a contact person between the Earth Advocates Club at the high school and the committee. So if you ever want to get students involved or you have a project that you think students would, it would be good to have them on. Um, she would be the person that you could contact and she could bring it to students and she could encourage them to then um, and um, join the committee. And that could also be used in the uh, AP Environmental Science classes. I know this toolkit is going to be used in those classes as well. So yeah, the biggest things that I need um, for you, from you guys is just to answer the three prompts on the slide for the Simsbury Sustainability Committee, so that I can include some information for kids to use. Um, so I can either, we can discuss these prompts now or I can email them or I'm not sure what you want to do, what we have time for.
Um, is it here?
Um, it's slide twenty-one, that one, yeah.
Okay. This is a fantastic presentation. So this is something that, that you, you put together with, with the Girl Scouts?
Um, I put it together by myself. It's for a Gold Award Project, which is like the final big project that you do as a Girl Scout. Um, and I just, I have four advisors that I work with.
Fantastic. Four advisors from, from the Girl Scouts.
Uh, no, they're uh, from the community. I have one from Massachusetts who's a part of Citizens Climate Lobby.
Okay. And, and what's the name you said of the group at the high school, Earth?
Earth, Earth Advocates.
Earth ad, is that like an environmental club or something?
Yeah, it is.
Right. Interesting. We have had, in the past, we've had um, representatives on the Clean Energy Task Force from, from the high school. So I know you, I know you all are busy, busy folks and maybe a, uh, an, an extra meeting each month is not um, is not your highest priority, but um, it would be really great to, if this stuff we can be doing together. So I think that's kind of what you're looking for here. What the Sustainability Committee does, um, maybe you've gotten a bit of a flavor for that, for that tonight. Um, you know, uh, that, that list of, 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 of actions, you know, that we had before from um, from Sustainable CT really kind of gives you the breadth of, you know, of, of activity, of activity, since I'm sharing and I can just flash over here again. You know, we, this, this program defines sustainability broadly, right? It, it starts with equity, right? Um, it talks about economic sustainability and it talks about natural resources, ecosystems, planning. You don't need to write this down. This is all, all in here, right? The transportation, energy, it's, it's not, it's not at all a narrow um, view. You know, I mean, culture is in here, education. Um, so the, 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 you know, to answer your question, what does the sustainability, where, where am I getting back here? What is, what does the Sustainability Committee do? It's really promoting um, all of those, you know, all of those types, all of those activities in, you know, under the framework of, of sustainability.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, to be honest, this committee was formed um, a couple of years ago to seek this certification for Sustainable CT. Um, and if all we do is just try to get a, get an award every couple of years, that would be kind of too bad, right? Um, because there's a lot of really good things going on in there that um, you know, that, 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 you know, we want to be doing. And I think, you know, even if, even if your motivation is sort of to get an award, um, there's a lot of good that comes out of this type of program, right? And there's a lot of terrific resources. Um, so you know, what the Sustainability Committee, Committee does is really, you know, organize the, the town, you know, the, the, the town's departments, the, the town's um, you know, um, volunteer and business organizations uh, around um, promoting sustain, these, you know, sustainability as defined by, by this program.
Right. That's cool. Thanks. Um, so I guess the next question would be like how youth would get involved in this committee?
That's a really good question and um, what would be great is to um, go through, as Tim was suggesting, to kind of go through this list together. And then maybe beyond what we have time to do tonight, but to go through there and, and, and maybe um, one or two of us could take part in a um, an Earth Advocates meeting or um, or, or vice versa, a couple of you come to one of our meetings and, and or just a smaller group of us go through that list. Cause I bet you there's a bunch of things on that list that um, you're either doing or are very close to what you're doing and we may be able to provide resources. Um, and we'd love to work together on. Um, I mean, does anybody else have any sort of, I mean, that was a long-winded answer, any other sort of more direct things you can see that we can do, that youth can do to help this committee?
Mark, concretely, this is Baird. Um, I'm, I'm working at the, I'm teaching at the high school right now. And I, uh, Leah, if you want to come by room two sixteen, I'm glad to meet with you and help the Earth Advocates figure out how to kind of connect with this list that uh, Mark is going through.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
And, and maybe include Tim in one of the meetings as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great. I was thinking also, you know, in terms of it, we always talked about how do we work with the sustainability in that crowdfunding, Mark? So maybe that's something we could try and run through the schools is like the crowdfunding, since there's that match program.
Yeah, and um, and, and you know, I'd be glad, I'm sure Tim and Tim and Bear can do this. I'd be glad to join as well to some of us to, you know, maybe come to one of your Earth Advocates meeting and just introduce you all to the Sustainable CT program and because there's a wealth of, it's a really great framework, you know, for just all of the different categories. And in each of those, there's tons of resources, right? You can see what other towns have done. Um, you can, you can get information from those towns directly. You can, there's people to contact. So you know, from pollinator pathways to composting to, you know, promoting energy efficiency. So happy to, happy to, you know, to work with this Earth Advocates group.
Yeah, that sounds great. And we haven't had our first meeting yet, but we're in contact with Mrs. Barker. Um, and so I can definitely let you know when one of our meetings is and have you guys come. That would be really cool.
And, and if anyone would like to actually become a member, we would, we would just love that. I would love to, you know, and even if you can't make every single meeting, um, that would just be, we would love that because really you're going to be dealing with uh, this mess a lot longer than a lot of us will.
Yeah.
So in terms, terms of contact information, you've got Tim, Tim, Tim and Baird right at the school?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Um.
And if you have a, Leah, if your group has a, a Google Classroom setup, if, if you want to send me the meet, because then I can see um, your meetings and then we can orchestrate to have Mark come in and figure that stuff out.
Yeah, sure. We actually, I think we're going to be meeting in person this year. So that might make it a little bit tricky. We haven't exactly worked out when would work best. Um, but yeah, I think we're going to be meeting after school.
Have you been involved in this group in past years?
Um, well, it wasn't really started up until um, May or April of last year. And then I joined. Um, I had kind of joined at the end of sophomore year, but by that time they were done with fundraising and that's all they used to do was fundraising. But now, since I've been involved, I've presented my toolkit to them.
Yeah.
Um, and now we're working on doing different things like within the community and not just like fundraising for things, like trying to educate and spread awareness as well.
There's, and you know, given it's the sort of beginning of the, of the school year and um, as you say, you're kind of just getting organized. And I don't know whether the, the, the group has their sort of agenda, their goals planned for the year. But um, there's a group in Connecticut um, based out of Fairfield that is essentially a network of youth sustainability advocates. A woman named Mary Hoag in Fairfield leads that and um, we're glad to put you or Ms. Barker in, in, in touch with her. Uh, they may do some, you know, some meetings, some Zoom meetings where you could see what other um, you know, youth in other towns are, you know, are doing for their activities and get some resources.
Yeah, um, I'll put my email in the chat. And if you send that to me, that would be fantastic. Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, sorry, Mark. Mark, I missed what, uh, which group you said. What was the name of it?
You, you know, Mary Hoag?
Oh, yeah.
She, at one of our Connecticut Energy Network meetings, she stood up and mentioned that they have a youth sustainability group, kind of like the youth um, analog of the Connecticut Energy Network. And she, um, last I heard was, was sort of organizing that. So
Okay.
I can find, find out if she's still doing it.
I was also wondering about Sun, I think it's called Sunrise, right?
Mm-hmm.
And you're aware of Sunrise, Leah?
Yeah, I think I.
No, Senate. Sorry, go ahead.
Um, I think I included the chapter information in this presentation, but I haven't gotten to anyone.
Very good. And so um, that, that's a very vibrant group. Um, and they're more, more focused a little on, on climate issues. Sustainability is a part of that, but you know that they're more interested in the actual climate sort of energy stuff.
Yeah.
But that's great that you know of them and they're very vibrant.
And do you, do you have a contact to them, Leah? If not, we can.
Um, I put in a link to uh, the chapter and I believe it's in the Connecticut part. No. Um, maybe try slide twenty or nineteen.
There you go.
There we go. So I believe that is a link to the movement and the chapters. So I'm not sure if that has contact information on it, but I could definitely reach out, um, or if anyone knows of like specific contact information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. Um, Senna Wazer is one of the leaders of that group and there's a couple of other younger people. Now they are now I believe in college, but they're still in college. Uh, and they are, they did start, I think, as high school students. Um, they're, they're very interesting. I, I'm not sure if it's exactly what you're looking for, but um, it's a good contact.
Okay. Thank you.
Leah, terrific. It's been wonderful having you. Thank you. Good luck on your Gold Award and let's, let's stay in touch.
Okay, sounds good.
We have two minutes, so I wanted to invite Baird to just speak a little bit about the EV show at September Feast. Are you there, Baird? Uh, maybe we lost him. Yes, so Baird, Baird sent an email. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. You want to tell us about the EV show?
Uh, very quickly, everyone's invited uh from three to six PM on Saturday um by the Rotary Park Playground um in Simsbury as part of September Feast. There'll be five or six cars, uh electric vehicles with some literature on Connecticut incentives and uh EVs in general. If any of you have EVs and wanna bring them, uh that would be great. Uh, I know Mark is, uh, his wife is bringing his and that's awesome. Um, and if anyone wanted to just come and talk to people about uh moving toward clean energy alternatives uh for all that period between three and six or some part of it, um, you are more than welcome to come. Uh, we'll have a, a little tent, a table, some literature and the cars there. Um, and uh we'll try to promote uh EVs, so that's basically it.
How about EV bikes? How about electric bikes?
Uh, didn't get there yet. Uh, uh, we were trying to get uh EV bus and we failed on that one. Uh, it seems to be having some trouble and um the cars, we have, I think, five or six, but we're hoping for more. But uh, we could get in touch with the bike shop that's right there in downtown.
Yeah, Bike Cellar is great, the guy who owns it, his name is Walter. They've been active with the legislation that got passed that was going to help uh electric bikes be also part of the Cheaper Program. So um, I actually have an EV, uh, an electric bike and I might ride down and, you know, see you all down there, so.
Well, great, bring your bike and promote it.
I will.
And Baird, thank you so much for really taking the lead from the beginning on, on this and organizing this whole event. So I think it's gonna be great, so three to, three to six Saturday, which is prime time, right? For uh, for, for September Feast, so. All right, we're gonna get booted. Um, is there anything else um we should bring up, we should mention to the group?
Now I just wanna thank Leah again if she's on.
Yes.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, thanks for coming, pleasure. Sorry we made you suffer through the whole meeting, next time we can time it, time it better, but at least now you kind of know what we do. Great, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second? Okay, there's a, there's a second.
There's a second.
Great, well, thanks, everybody, so uh joint meeting again, second, uh, second Wednesday of the month. Um, see you in October. Thanks, folks.
Thanks, Mark, thanks, everybody.